...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the roll call, please.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Richard, any changes or revisions to the agenda?
No.
Thank you. We're on to minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 4th, 2016?
I motion we approve the minutes of October 12, 2016.
October 4th.
October 4th, 2016.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television. Seeing none. Final orders, resolutions, written communications, none. Public hearings deliberations. It's now 6:02 PM. The public hearing for file PUD 2016-02 is now open. This public hearing concerns a request for a final master plan for a portion of the villages at Cascade Head planned unit development to allow for interim use of a portion of the development as an 18-hole disc golf course. The city of Lincoln City is the applicant and owner of the property proposed for the amendment. Preliminary master plan for this proposal was approved by the planning commission on June 2016. Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an ex parte contact conflict of interest or bias in this matter?
I have, I don't know if it is or not. So there was a Facebook post about one of, an area, I didn't go see it in particular, that had been clear cut supposedly where the first hole is, and I saw pictures of that, so I don't know what that would, if that's ex parte or not.
Okay, so you saw, the substance of the communication is you saw photographs of what is purported to be around the first hole having been clear cut?
Completely clear cut where the first hole is supposed to be. It was in a community Facebook page and just came up in my news feed.
So commissioners, when you have an ex parte communication that's disclosed, as this would be, you basically, you have to invite parties, anyone interested, to rebut during the hearing the substance of the ex parte communication. So any person who wants to can get up and say, "No, that's not a clear cut," or attempt to rebut what you just said you observed. Now, for purposes of this hearing, would you agree with the following statement? "I have not prejudged this application and I'm not prejudiced or biased by any potential conflict, prior contact or involvement. I'll make this decision solely upon the application of the relevant criteria and standards to the facts and evidence in the record of this proceeding."
I agree.
Anyone else?
I go walking in that area and I don't know if I saw any part of it or not. I can't tell you because I didn't take a map with me, but I just, it's one of my places to go walking.
So you're familiar with this site, the physical?
Sort of. I mean, I-
So you're disclosing a site visit of sorts?
Yes, but not in particular to what we're hearing tonight. I was just walking.
On the village's property?
Yes.
Do you agree with the statement, "You haven't prejudged what I just read"?
That's correct.
Did you observe anything during your walk that you remember or is going to weigh in the decision tonight?
No.
I've been up there about 30 times, but I feel the same way. I give the same answer and agree.
Okay. Thank you.
I've also been out there once on an autobahn walk, but I-
Same answer? Same answer?
I've eaten berries up there. Same answer.
So we're all familiar with grounds. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to consider this matter? Following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to the city code and ORS 197.763, par. 5. Staff will now read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
Lincoln City Municipal Code 17.52.210-Q, planned unit developments, planning commission consideration of final master plan.
Thank you.
Would you like me to read the-
Yeah, would you please?
These are the required statements. "All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria previously listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to an issue precludes appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence."
Thank you. Before the staff presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements. Staff report. Questions. Applicants' presentation. Those in favor of the application. Those opposed. Rebuttal by the applicant. Requests of continuances or to leave the record open. Close of the hearing. Close of the record. Requests to submit written argument deliberations and decision. The city has established some time limits. The applicants will have 15 minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the applicant testifies, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the planning commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Please present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is the consideration of the final master plan for the interim use of part of the villages at Cascade Head property as a disc golf course. The city purchased the property a few years ago and there is a preliminary master plan for the entire development. Back this past summer, you approved a, you gave preliminary approval to a modification of the preliminary master plan for this project. Now, what's being sought is final master plan approval for the project. The main, well, there's several criteria, but the first is that the final master plan has to be consistent with the preliminary master plan and all conditions applicable. The preliminary master plan only had one condition, and that was that it was permitted to be modified within the boundaries of the proposed course. So in this first slide is the preliminary master plan that was proposed for the course. I just want to point out a couple of things on it because it'll show the differences. Over here on the right side, there's three holes shown, numbered four, five, and six. And over here on the left side, there's hole 14 is one hole. The final master plan changes this a little bit. Over on the right side, where there were three holes on the preliminary master plan, there's only two proposed. And over here on the left side, where the 14th hole was, there are two holes proposed there. So there's still 18 holes, just a slightly different arrangement within the boundaries as originally proposed. So in staff's opinion, that condition is met and this criterion is met. Other ordinance standards require that all utility systems and landscaping conform to the standards or are approved by the city engineer, and there are no proposed utility systems, so that doesn't need approval. Landscaping will just be the natural landscaping that's there now. Since this is for a phase of the, overall villages at Cascade Head planned unit development, it's got to be found to be in accordance with various criteria in addition to the main ones. The first of these is that the proposed planned unit development will be substantially compatible with existing development in the surrounding area. Undeveloped land in the surrounding area can be developed in a manner substantially compatible with the proposed planned unit development. This proposal is different from most that we consider under these ordinances because we're not really talking about development, we're not building anything in the sense of there's no structures being erected, no roads being put in or anything like that. So things like the proposed density, which is called out as one thing to look at, there's no density, no dwelling units. The use is allowed, it's a disc golf course, which is a park use, which is allowed in this zone. Lot size, there's no lots being proposed. Appearance and ambiance, the main thing we look at there are the trees. There's, as you can see in this, in the aerial photo, there's a thick tree canopy. It will be retained with only a small number of trees, fewer than a dozen being removed for the disc golf course. I know nothing about any area that was cut. There may have, I vaguely recall that as part of the trail system that was being put in or improved, there may have been a little bit of kind of, I don't even know. I have no idea what area specifically you saw, so I can't, really can't respond to that. But I know there's been no kind of wholesale cutting up there. There hasn't been any of the thinning that we've done in other open space areas, so I really can't address that. But the authorization here will be just for cutting for, cutting fewer than a dozen trees in this whole, it's about 37 acre area. No buildings, so building in-site design is irrelevant. Street design, pedestrian amenities, there will be no streets, but there will be trails for the holes and linking individual holes together. They won't be paved, but there will be some improvements where the trails cross wet areas. They'll be essentially what amounts to like a boardwalk kind of thing going on. I forget what they call that.
Pantheon?
Pantheon, yes.
What's the word?
Pantheon.
It's like a bridge without sides on it. It's just the-
Cool.
And there's a couple of areas where there will have to be like wooden staircase down a few steps where there's a steep change in elevation, but short area, small areas. Next criterion is the number of years proposed for completion of the development or each phase of the development is reasonable, taking into consideration the possibility of changing land use patterns in or requirements of the city over time. And you should establish an expiration date for the approval, not longer than two years, and you can impose other conditions. The disc golf is expected to be completed within a year, so in staff's opinion, that's a reasonable time for this. Next, "Construction of the development can be accomplished in a manner that does not create unreasonable negative impacts in the area surrounding the development or in the city." That's talking about, again, just the construction activities. And typically, those impacts include noise, dust, traffic, track out of mud and that kind of thing. Again, because of the nature of what's being proposed here, the golf course, those kinds of things aren't going to happen. The work is going to be done by hand with hand tools, there's not going to be heavy equipment going in or anything like that, so-
Even the removing of the trees?
Well, we're talking chainsaws, but they won't be removed from the site. The logs won't be removed from the site or anything. Next, "The development will not create unreasonable negative impacts in the area surrounding the development or in the city. In order to assure the avoidance or mitigation of negative impacts, the planning commission may require the filing of restrictions in the county deed records." Now, this is the impacts of the development itself, not the construction, but just having the development there. And the principal impact will be from the people that will come to play the course. There'll be people on the trails, or people hiking in there will be aware that there'll be people playing the course. And there also will be parking impacts at Northeast Devils Lake Boulevard at the end of it by the gate there where the first hole will be. There'll be some parking on the existing roads. And you should decide whether the proposal meets this criterion and whether you want to have any conditions to address it. The next requirement is that street, water, sewer, drainage, and drainage pretreatment, stormwater detention, and other similar facilities in the area surrounding the development and in the city are or will be adequate to provide for the health, safety, and welfare for the development's population densities and type of development proposed. And this is looking at, you know, at all these facilities in the surrounding area, and again, this isn't going to be affecting these, because nothing's being built. There's no street, no water, no sewage or anything like that, and the stormwater will not be an issue, again, because it's, they're not putting any kind of hard surface in. Next, "Street, water, sewer, drainage, and drainage pretreatment, stormwater detention, and other similar facilities proposed to be constructed as a part of the development are adequate to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the population densities and the type of development proposed." This is, the other one was about in the surrounding area, this one is in the area of the particular development proposed. There is nothing proposed to be built. You may want to consider whether some kind of porta potty or something should be provided up there or required up there, and you can suggest that as, or make that a condition if you want, so that you can find that sewer will be adequate. And "The proposed number of residential units does not exceed the maximum permitted," and none are proposed, so that criterion is irrelevant. That concludes the staff report.
Questions for Richard?
Yeah, I agree. I think we talked about the last meeting in June about maybe the public works department putting in a porta potty for players to use when they're on the course, and I think that would be a good idea.
Which would be a condition of approval at that stage?
If the commission wants it to be, yes.
Are there any other questions, Gary?
I don't know if we asked this, but are we signing up for any long term, how long that we'll have this land obligated to be a course? I mean, because they're putting efforts into creating it, so-
Yeah, it's interim use, and it's, there is no specific time period for it that's set out. It will likely be some time before that area is proposed for any kind of development under the overall planned unit development for the villages at Cascade Head. We will be developing a new plan for the entire villages' property, and that may affect the order in which pieces of it are made available for development. There's no specific timetable at this time.
Yes, I'm trying to think of, you know, protecting both sides in case we do have a development that comes along, or in case they put a lot of effort into it and like to have the ability to use it for some period of time also.
That's, fundamentally, that's a chance that people are taking. You know, like I say, I don't think it's going to be finished in a year, and a year after that is going to go away. But there is no timetable for when that property would be developed, but it will be developed. There's no question of that.
Is the city under any obligation that way, Richard?
I believe the project received a timetable extension in 2012, before I actually got here, and I think it was a 10-year extension. So the development is, you know, valid and has an approved development order, but we will need to proceed with development in a timely fashion. There is no right to continue the interim use. It's the city's property, and the city has said it would be used for housing and development purposes and designated it back at the time of acquisition, I think within a month, for interim park use. But there's no guarantee that the interim use will continue when development starts to occur.
Then the follow-up question would be, are they aware that that's the condition, so they're knowing they're putting effort into something that at some point in time is going to disappear?
I'm assuming they want to testify, and so you can ask them. I should also point out that before anything is done up there, there will have to be an agreement between the city that authorizes them to proceed and it would set the terms that, you know, that basically we would reserve the right to end the use.
So would that be where we would give them a timeframe? Like if a development were proposed?
This would be-
Would the disc golf group be notified early so they are aware of it?
There would be an agreement. Now, under, you know, the planning commission determines whether or not the final site plan meets the criterion. The city council has some ordinances regulating parks, and one of those ordinances talks about donation, like volunteer projects. It has provisions about donating a standard bench, and we don't have to go to the parks' board for that if it's a standard bench. But it also says if we have a non-standard donation or a volunteer project, that has to go through a process with the city council to authorize, basically, people to enter onto city property, to perform work on city property only in accordance with approved plans and conditions, and that those terms and conditions will be worked out between the city council and whoever's saying they want to do this. And that's going to include the right of the city to, upon reasonable notice, say the use is going to have to be discontinued.
I have another question, if I might. There doesn't seem to be, and maybe it's in what Richard was talking about, but there doesn't seem to be anything in our packet that talks about hours that it would be open. Is it dawn to dusk?
It's a park, so parks have limitations on their hours, and where, I don't recall if the resolution establishing the interim use listed hours, but we do have regulations on park closure and hours of operation. If you, as the planning commission, think that this particular use needs to, in order to further the public health, safety, welfare, or not interfere with neighbors, be operated during specified hours, as the planning commission, you could designate that. But there are existing park regulations which govern the use of parks, including this interim facility.
So that would, okay, I would have a suggestion that we do that.
Is something wrong with the soundtrack, or?
I think they're having a thing downstairs.
Oh, it's upstairs. Okay.
It's not the TV, it's actually, it's the Day of the Dead celebration. The dead are restless.
Deanna?
I have another question, which is about parking, and there doesn't seem to be a real concern about it, but I'm still, I mentioned this during the preliminary report, that during the tournaments, there may be, hopefully you're very successful and have a lot of competition, so there'd be some good-sized tournaments, and I just want to make sure that that, that those times of those things can be posted, so those people who do use that area frequently for hiking and walking can either stay away or be aware that that would happen.
Could be done?
I think when they, the preliminary master plan, they had a showing how many spaces could fit. They had like little black rectangles, I remember.
Not on here, this is the preliminary one. But I'll just, you know, there's over a mile of road there with parallel parking available on both sides of it their whole length, so I doubt that parking will be a concern, it'll be an issue, since that whole area is undeveloped right now, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Just an answer to the earlier question. It looks like the resolution provides that the hours of operation are only during daylight hours or between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, whichever is more restrictive.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Further questions?
I have a question of the city attorney. Would a tournament be a special event? That would require a separate permit? I'm just following up on Commissioner Hinton's question.
Yeah, there's exclusive use, which is, exclusive use permit is just getting use of the park, but does not trigger the special event ordinance. Special events are typically involving larger use of city facilities, like there's, you know, there's going to be need for additional police officers or having other impacts, and there are other triggers for special event permits. So it depends on the-
Magnitude?
Yeah, the magnitude of the event as to whether or not they have to go through the special event permit process. Sometimes they can just get away with the exclusive use permit process, which is like if you want to reserve a ball field for a softball game, you don't necessarily need a special event permit, but if you're going to have loudspeakers or, you know, certain things trigger a special event permit.
So if they wanted to have that whole cul-de-sac be a bunch of tents and have vendors and an event and all that things, that could be, it could be applied for?
Yeah, commercial activity would definitely trigger, commercial activity is typically prohibited in a park except for approved concessions. There can be some special event allowance for some things, but, yeah, it depends on what you propose, you may have to go through that more rigorous special event permitting process.
Thank you, Richard. I'm going to back up to item four, the ex parte contact. I just remembered seeing some folks out in the audience out here that I had more than just a casual site visit kind of ex parte. I encountered the applicants and some of the construction crew while they were out, I think, scoping that section of the territory, and we had some ensuing conversation about the plan, so it was a more significant ex parte than a site visit. I don't believe in any way that would affect my judgment, but I want to throw it back open to any affected party to disqualify me if you feel, or to do whatever the next step is.
Was there anything about the substance of the conversation you recall that you could disclose, besides, you talked about the plan?
No, I heard of things about removing some dead wood. No, I heard, I heard of things about removing some dead wood from the flight paths and things like that, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything. And I believe it wasn't anything beyond what was testified to in the first meeting.
But you agree with the earlier statement that...
I agree with the earlier statement and I don't feel that I would be biased in any way by that, by that contact.
You can invite anyone during the testimony to rebut your savings if they will.
I will. Thank you. All right, are you the applicant's presentation?
Yes, I'm switching hats. I'm now putting on the applicant's hat and I'll just say, I think staff did an excellent job and I don't have anything to add.
Very good, sir. Very good.
Excellent. Are there any questions of the applicant's presentation? Testimony and support of the application? Excuse me?
I had a question.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Richard, is this being, is this being taken care of out of the general fund then?
No, we've, we applied for and actually have received approval of a grant from Travel Oregon. And that combined with fundraising that the disc golf group is doing will pay for it. There is money, well, there is an entry in the budget for the, the cost of this, but it's a pass-through. So there's no city money being used. It'd be the grant money and fundraising go in and out immediately, so it's not using city funds.
And their upkeep and maintenance is the responsibility of the city or?
It would continue to be an obligation of the, of the group behind the proposal.
Is it, I believe that there was a matching, we have a grant, but is there a match to the grant required in lieu or?
I believe that would be covered by the fundraising that the applicant's doing, or not the applicant, but the advocate is doing.
So in order for any development to occur, to actually start physical construction of this, there has to be that subsequent agreement with the volunteer group that would like to undertake this project. As part of that, there has to be fundraising to provide the match. And I believe part of the match can be in work, volunteer hours?
I believe that's right.
I don't have all the details, but that's again, something for the council to, once the land use hurdle is overcome, then the council would have to negotiate that agreement and grant the permission to do the project.
Mr. Johnson, if we put a condition that a porta potty be required, would the cost of maintaining that porta potty be out of the parks budget? Or would it be out of this?
We would, we'd have to figure that one out. I'm not sure. I, if it is out of the parks budget, the cost of those is fairly low, but it's something we'll have to work out.
I might suggest that you talk about toilet facilities rather than, you know, porta potty. Because if it's, if it's possible to plum one in the future, we don't want to exclude that by saying you have to have a porta potty.
Good idea. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, sir. Testimony and support of the application?
All right, my name is David Cutler. I talked to you guys before. I went up there like a week and a half ago and looked on where the, like northeast Devils Lake Road Boulevard, or northeast Devils Lake Boulevard, where that little orange...
Can you use the mouse?
Excuse me, David.
Okay.
So, so that the audience outside here can see.
And as you come down here, this is where they, it looks like there's a bunch of dirt been dumped. And that's like right in the middle of where our landing spot for our first hole is, but other than that, everything looks okay. This is a beautiful spot. It's just absolutely pristine. We don't want to cut down a bunch of stuff. The things that would be taken down would be like dead snags. It would be hurting people anyway if they're falling during a storm or any wind happens. And as this course was set up, it's staying away from all the lowline wetlands. So we don't even have to build bridges over the wetlands because we're staying away from them as much as we can as we go along anyway. It's just a beautiful, sweet spot. We know that it's not going to be forever, but we want it, we want it as quick as possible so that we can enjoy it while we can, before it's gone. This is something that's going to bring people to the community, that people of all ages are going to enjoy. My wife's pregnant right now with our first child and I'm already thinking about taking my daughter out and teaching her how to disc golf, making her a world champion. And it'd be awesome if this was, this was the course that she grew up on. The porta potties, I think the porta potty out there would be a benefit, not just to disc golfers, but to all the people who use that trail as it is. It's just seems like a no-brainer on that one, but it should be for everyone involved. When you're, Diana, when you're asking about posting up when tournaments are going to be, in our plan, we had a kiosk that we would have posted up there, upcoming events and all different types of things, and we can actually put signs up along the trail to let people know when, when those things are going to happen. We just had, I don't know if you guys saw there, they had that tournament out at Chinook Winds. There was disc golf baskets set up out there. There's two eighteen-hole courses on the course and it was just absolutely amazing. It was so much fun. I had to leave because I'm a football coach for fifth and sixth graders and had to go down to Toledo. But I was there volunteering at first and it was just absolute, it was cool seeing all the people, how excited they were to come down to the coast in Lincoln City and be actual, actually able to play disc golf. And there's over a hundred people there all at the same time.
So you went to that spot that looked like it was clear-cut?
It looked, not so much clear-cut, it's just dirt taken up there and dumped on top of everything and dumped and dumped and dumped and dumped. Truckload after truckload after truckload after truckload. And it had been all flattened out on top and looked like there'd been some more coming and just getting ready for more and more.
So is that something that was...
Was it related, was it related to your activities?
Not at all.
Would have been something that Public Works of the Parks Department did for some reason that's not related to this. Maybe the city manager knows more.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, sir.
What he said, just for the record, what he said is that it's dirt that was brought up from Regatta Park. This is so, because I know that it can't be heard on this, I just want to repeat it.
So is that something that could be adjusted?
Yeah, we could, we could go around that. It actually makes a nice flat spot, but it's going down. I don't know how it's, how it's going to be. We'd work around it.
Other questions for Mr. Cutler? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great night and congratulations.
Russ Brown?
My name's Russ Brown. Good seeing you all again. Just wanted to show up again tonight and show support. I will be one of the people on the list with David Cutler that helps do all the work on the course, the maintenance, all that, fundraising. I've already been doing some fundraising, but we kind of cut it off there for a while because we wasn't sure what was going to happen with the park. And there was no sense in getting all these monies from these businesses and then have to be like, well, it's not going to happen. So we basically got promissory notes right now, so if it does happen, that they, the businesses will come through at that time. We knew, yeah, from before it was going to be interim use on the park. That's why we planned to put in paper stones rather than big concrete tee pads, so it'd be easier to remove in time. But the sooner it can happen, the more time that everybody can enjoy it and maybe get a taste of what it brings to the city. And that way, when it does have to be taken out or whatnot in, down the road, then they could see the appreciation, have some appreciation for it and what, how much it does bring to this town. So, um, as far as with the dirt piled up, it will be quite a backbreaking affair. We have to do it all with shovels and no other equipment to move all that, but I'm sure we can work around it in some, some way.
I have two questions for you. One, how long does an average eighteen holes take? For the, for a beginner or the novice?
That really depends on the course. I mean...
What do you propose this one to be? I'm asking because if, if we're going to, if we're going to instill when you can use the park, it should it be known that, hey, it's going to get dark at this time. Please don't start a game after this time.
And part of, when we redid for the final layout was we broke it kind of into a front nine and a back nine, so people have an area to walk out in the middle. I'm going to say it's going to take probably, for the casual player, at least probably an hour and a half to make it through from, from one to eighteen.
Could there be somehow LED lights or something that if they're dark and they're out there and they didn't know how long it took, which way is out? You know, some kind of safety mechanism that if you're on hole seven and it's dark and you didn't know how long it would take, is there a way that they could know that this is out? Is that something that you guys?
We could look into having something like that, but again, it's so wooded down in there that we...
There's only the one.
Hard time even getting solar panels to pick up and run.
Well, right.
Maybe glow-in-the-dark arrows or something like that.
Right, something, something simple that say, hey, this is ways out. Additionally, how many volunteers do you have that are going to be doing this? The work to make it happen?
Anywhere between up to as many as a dozen coming up from Newport to Albus and some of these other areas.
I ask because I see a plaque at Regatta Park that says, these are the people that helped build Regatta Park. And they, it was a community effort. I've met people that say, hey, I was able to do this. Is that something that if this goes on, that you will say, hey, anyone who wants to help, contact me, David, whoever, and that this can be all of us together and you don't have to know anything about disc golf? That you just want to participate?
Definitely. We do something like that. And as David had mentioned, we've tried to get, we're trying to do a kiosk as well where we could put...
That information.
Some names up for people that have physically, put in some time up there helping, not just money-wise.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that it would be, I know that, that the people who participated in the building of Regatta Park have a great sense of pride with that. And I think that this is something that could be like that.
Fully agree. I totally agree.
Thank you. Is there any testimony in opposition to this application? Others including any testimony from representatives of public agencies? None? No need for a rebuttal. O R S. Section 197 dot seven sixty-three, paragraph six A states that upon request, the commission must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to, excuse me, to permit any participant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence? No? Does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record as provided in O R S. Section 197, seven sixty-three, paragraph six E?
Yes.
Excuse me?
He said yes.
Yes. I don't know where to look for this. Does the city attorney or staff have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings? Instructions on the applicable law or legal advice concerning the application of the law to the evidence and the record?
I think you have the ability to impose conditions you think are necessary for public health, safety, welfare to achieve compliance with the criteria. With that, I think you've had some suggestions for conditions. Staff?
No.
Thank you. This matter is returned to the table for deliberations and recommendation.
The motion, we close the record?
The hearing and the record.
And the record, record and the hearing. Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed? None.
See, one condition, it seems to be on our heads is somewhere for a bathroom facility of some form or another. And I don't want to lock them into anything, but, you know, that'd be part of our conditions.
I think I agree with that. A toilet, toilet facility, I think is how Deborah phrased it. And I also would like to see the tournaments posted as they had suggested they could do at a kiosk that they're planning to build with this. And also to post the, the hours that it's open.
I would like to see it that recommended no later start than versus park ending, like it closes, like we suggest you don't start.
And I was going to say just that. I was just wrapping it up.
Thank you.
So is there consensus on those three items?
Yes.
Would somebody like to make a motion that we include those three?
You might want to be a little more clarifying on the restrooms. I think you, not saying that you need to say that there are going to be one for women, one for men, or one for somebody else, but I think there should be some sort of criteria in there that says that the restroom facilities will be compatible for all people that use it.
I think they have, you know, ADA, ADA porta potties, you know, that, that could be there and as one of the ways to do that. I, is sewer plum to the cul-de-sac?
No.
So there's no sewer that far in?
No sewer that far in. There's no sewer there.
So, I mean...
I, I think we could make a nice general recommendation to the city council that we would like them to consider some sort of restroom facility.
The city engineer.
Go figure out what the facility is going to be like.
Right, because there's, it's a hiking place, an Audubon society. I mean, it's not just for, you have to be a disc golfer in order to use this toilet.
So there's one. We recommend the city council that there will be restroom facilities.
It doesn't go to the city council. You may want to, I mean, I guess the agreement will, but you may want to have something like, just that there be adequate toilet facilities as determined by the city engineer or something like that.
Sounds like a good motion. All right, I have, let's hear an enumeration, sir.
Run, run maybe?
Ron Chandler, as it pertains to bathroom facilities, I would suggest you keep that as vague and as many options as possible because again, this is being put in, the city's the applicant, but it's being put in by volunteers that are doing the disc golf. It's also interim. And so if you're, if you're going anywhere close to a permanent facility, you could be spending a fortune or asking the city to spend a fortune on something that may very well disappear or we end up having to design housing subdivisions around it because...
Do we want to use the word that include a temporary facility?
Well, I, I, I think that I would go off of what Richard said without the engineer part, that there is adequate restroom facilities. That could be a porta potty if we find that, that the master plan shows that there should be a park somewhere and certainly we can design a permanent facility in association with a park, with the development of the property. So I think if you give the city as much latitude as possible, then we can make it work either on a temporary basis or a more permanent if it so works.
Thank you, sir. I was going to suggest that we... I was going to suggest that we just add a phrase, something like, in keeping with the temporary nature or-
Interim bathroom.
The interim nature of-
Interim facility.
Of course it's so.
Right. Right.
At the other two points?
Diana's. Who are?
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I think this is what we were saying, that we post the following three things. The dates of the tournaments, the hours that it will be open to use. And then also post, this would have to change by season, I would think, but when the last game could start, to make sure that it could be finished before you're supposed to leave. And then the other one was just the adequate, provide adequate toilet facility.
Right. Recommended no later start time. Because, I mean, if you're really good, then you can probably do it in thirty minutes, not an hour and a half. Yeah, I'm, I'm not the disc golf police. So-
So can we put that in a more general?
Is that, is it, is saying that it has to be posted, making them have a kiosk?
Part of the grant is to cover the cost of the kiosk. So.
So recommended hours of operation.
Well, I, I think you would specify-
I wonder about the, the latest starting time thing, if that's necessary or-
Seems a little over.
I want to specify, rather than post the, because of time, obviously the darkness changes, you might want it to simply indicate that it normally takes an hour and a half to complete the course. Please keep that in mind when starting the course because the hours of operation are, you know, daylight hours only. Now, if it was me, I'd throw the first disc at the first hole and then spend the next six hours looking for the disc.
So that sounds like a very good generalization for that.
So then, are we-
What was the next point? There was another point.
The tournament?
Oh, I just, I said, I listed three things under posting. And one of them was the hours that it's open. The other one is now just letting folks know it takes approximately an hour and a half to finish a course. And then to post the tournaments. And then the other thing was the provide adequate toilet facility.
That sounds like generally two motion, two points. Postings and restroom. Somebody have a motion in mind?
I do. Okay. I move that we approve the final master plan for P U D 2016 dash two. And include conditions that are under posting, three items that it, the hours that this park is open. And let, and also post that it takes about an hour and a half to complete the course. And also post when the tournaments are going to be, the dates of the tournaments. And also provide an adequate toilet facility.
Your second?
Second.
Kate, would you call the roll on this, please?
Sure. Cunningham?
Yes.
Bryson?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton? Yes. And Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This is a tentative decision of the planning commission. Staff will prepare a final order for adoption at the next available meeting. Old business?
I have none.
New business?
None.
Reports and comments, community development director?
I just want to give you a little bit of an update on, on how building has been going lately. Just a real brief report. This chart that I have up on the screen right now shows the number of building permits that we've issued in various years. I'm not a PowerPoint expert, but the, the bottom figures are, should be years. So it starts with nineteen ninety. But for some reason, it wouldn't let me do zero, zero, or zero, one. So where it's zero, that's the year two thousand. One is the year two thousand and one, and so on. What you can see here is that we've had a really fluctuating numbers of building permits we've issued over the years. If you look in this area, it was two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven, we had a very high number of building permits. That was in the boom of the, of the building and housing boom. The recession started in the second half of two thousand seven and continued into about the second half of two thousand nine. You can see that it really dropped off and then kept on dropping off. I think it's, it's financing became an issue for people. And also is the, because we had the overbuilding during the boom, we had absorption that had to happen. So there was, the market was reduced. What you can see, what I wanted to point out is the last few years, it's come back up. It's two thousand sixteen, that's an estimate. And I'm estimating that it will be around two hundred and forty, maybe as many as two hundred and fifty permits issued in two thousand sixteen. We've issued, I want to say about two hundred and twenty-five so far. So my, my estimate will be, be somewhere, like I said, two forty, two hundred and fifty building permits. Then the dollar value of the building permits in millions of dollars is shown on this chart. Again, you can see we had a boom where it went up over forty, over forty-six million at the peak during the boom years, dropped way down to eleven or twelve million. And actually, I think one year it was about nine million. This year, I'm estimating it'll be around twenty-two million. I mean, you can see, if you look pre-boom, that's a, that's, that's a pretty good level compared to how it's been over the last several years and pre-boom, even here, starting in ninety-nine. These were not unusual years, but the, the dollar value was pretty low. So it seems like we're recovering well and really in good shape in that regard. And finally, I just wanted to show you the number of new single family dwelling permits we've had over the years. Again, if you, you can see the boom, we got up to over a hundred and forty, I think it was a hundred and forty-six was the maximum in, in, at the height. But you could look, what would be like normal would be forty to sixty permits a year, other than the boom years. And then in the bust years, after the recession, where a couple of years, actually, we had fewer than twenty permits a year. So far this year, we've issued forty-two. And I expect that we'll have issued, we will, by the end of the year, have issued at least forty-eight and, at least forty-eight and probably as many as fifty permits for single family housing. So I've sort of been, been predicting, you know, we're, we're getting there. But I think, I think we're, we've finally recovered and building is at what I would consider a normal level now.
Do you have the dollar amount, like you did the last one for that?
I don't have a dollar amount on the housing. I can get that, but I don't, I don't have it right now. That's, I just wanted to give you this briefly, just to show you where we are. I also want to mention that, you know, we're looking at, well, actually, we're starting to set up some meetings with builders to go over the building process and concerns that they have, their expectations, what we can do to improve our building permit process. And we're setting those up for later this month.
Now's the, the twenty or twenty-five and the four or five each, each time?
Yeah. We've actually identified about thirty people that, you know, I'm expecting at least some of them to say no. But yeah.
The invitations.
We're reaching out as much, you know, to, to a lot of builders.
Thank you, sir.
Got one question, is it?
Okay.
Have we generated something in the sense of what we might call workforce affordable housing in Lincoln City? So that we have something, some idea of what the, you know, workforce makes and thereby what they can afford? So that we have a number when we say, you know, we're going to give you a high density or something if you do affordable housing and, and things like that. Because I, I think it's an economic point that we need to have established so that we can talk rationally about what we need.
The city council has not formally adopted a number, but the number that urban renewal is working off of, which is probably where it will end up, is somewhere between sixty to a hundred and twenty percent of the median household income.
So they've got a number at least that they're, you know, so we have something to work with.
That's correct.
Economic point that has to be there.
Our consultants for economic opportunity analysis and housing needs analysis have put together some of that information that might be interesting to you. It's in, available on our website, I believe, the PowerPoint that was used at the last project advisory committee. So if you want to check that out.
We have a, a meeting coming up in December, which I'll, I'll remind you of when it, when we get closer to it. But we'll be going over a lot of this information as well. I think it'd be, be interesting to attend and see what, see what's happening.
Thank you. Reports and comments, city attorney? Landing commissioners? Oh, I have a comment. I want to make a shout out to the Lincoln County Animal Shelter. Those people do a wonderful job. I was afraid to go down there. And now I go down every week and sit with kitties. Public comments on non-agenda items and not involving a public hearing? None? Future agenda items and next meetings. The next meeting is, our next meeting is Tuesday, November fifteenth at six P M.